All right, we are ready to roll, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everyone. It is February 11, 2021, and this is our county council, sorry, county council meeting. I want to welcome everyone. It's absolutely very nice day out, depending on where you're sitting. It's nice here in Hanover. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Currently, we have all members of Gray County Council in attendance with the exception of Counselor Soever, and I will let you know when he arrives.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, is there any declaration of interest from anyone? I do not see anyone, therefore, we'll proceed on. If one does arise, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Item number four, adoption of minutes, A, is County Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes dated January 28, 2021, and the Special Committee of the Whole Budget Discussion Minutes, which are dated January 29. Those are moved by Counselor Keveney and seconded by Counselor Potter. And Madam Clerk, I'll turn things over to you for some developments.
Thank you, and I'll likely reach out to Anne Marie as well. I will note that Counselor Soever has joined us. So just for Council's information, that new information has been received by staff in the last few days related to the loan for the Owen Sound Housing Company, and thus the resolution to adopt the January 28, 2021 Committee of the Whole Minutes need to be amended. Tara has a new resolution drafted, and she can put that on the screen when we're ready. But I'll just, I wanted to inform Council of that. I did speak with the mover and seconder, Counselors Keveney and Potter respectively, to let them know of that, and they were still happy to move and second those amended minutes. So, Anne Marie.
Certainly. Good morning, Counsel. Just what did come to light was the security that we proposed in the resolution was going to provide or was going to cause Owen Sound Housing Company to incur costs, and that was the entire reason of us providing the short-term loan in the first place was so that those costs would not be incurred, and also that it could cause delays. So we're changing the type of security that we're using, and we wanted to reflect that in the minutes that we would be now looking at a promissory note and agreement versus the registering on title.
Thank you. So we're going to have those, that amendment put up on the screen?
Yes, Tara is just going to share her screen.
Thank you.
So it's the highlighted piece there. The council minutes from the 28th and the budget meeting minutes from the 29th are as adopted as presented, and it's just the Committee of the Whole 28th with the third clause of that resolution being amended to strike out the last piece of that particular clause.
Okay, anyone have any, well, we'll deal with the amendment first, or can we deal with this as a whole?
We can deal with it all at once. It's been moved as amended, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions about any of the minutes?
All understood. I'm sorry, Mr. Warden. I do see our Director of Legal Services has his hand up.
Okay, go right ahead, sir.
Morning, everyone. Just a small point of clarification. The promissory note is not security. It's evidence of the debt, but it's an unsecured loan is what's being requested here. That's all.
Thank you. And I'm gathering that we're, we're sort of dealing with a time pressure here. So we're moving this way. I'm gathering in the future we'll be looking for a secured mortgage arrangement. Would that be correct, sir?
This is something that I think we'll be looking into in the future to establish a more consistent policy with respect to, I don't know if the CIO wants to add anything with respect to that.
Thanks, Michael. And, and yes, I think over time, our, the, the size of the projects that we're involved in, the level of investment that's required on the county's part has, has changed, and I think that's true of any construction project. So we will be coming forward to council in the future with an updated policy. We also want to work with our providers. These nonprofits are critical to getting these projects done, and so we need to, to work closely with them to make sure that every aspect of, of these projects is well-understood. So there's some work to do here, and we will undertake that work in the coming months.
Yes, which I'm sure will include probably some sort of reaching out to individuals to let them know that, I guess, change is afoot.
Absolutely, and to get their input into, you know, how things can work for, for them as, as well as ourselves.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Anybody else? I don't see any other hands. If that is the case, then I will call the question. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is Carrie. Thank you very much. We're on to item 4B, which is Long-Term Care Development Planning Task Force Minutes dated January 22, and some resolutions contained therein. It is moved by Counselor Mill and seconded by Counselor Desai. And any questions with respect to those minutes?
I see Counsel Billen.
Counselor Mill, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I note in the resolution to adopt those minutes, I guess it would be the second clause, number two, that SHS consulting has been retained, et cetera. Was there not some work done in this regard? I guess it would be the last term of council consoling as to, you know, potential uses for the facility. Is this a repeat or a rerun, or why, or can I get a little bit of clarification on that, please? I mean, I wasn't involved the last term, so I'm not certain what the outcome of that consulting was.
I could speak, thank you. So earlier, when we were considering some further options with regard to how we might proceed with, with long-term care services and, and other services to seniors, we did retain CBRE to provide some advice to council, and that work really centered around what the current status of senior services was in the county. What do people need? What's available to them? You know, looking at the costs and, and people's, the level of resources that, that people have to be able to support that. And this work is much more about the building itself. So certainly, that, some of that work will, will factor into this. Times are changing, right? So the things that you did five years ago might not be the things that you would do today. So I think we want to refresh that and the analysis that was done earlier, as well as take a good look at the, the functionality of, of the building, what a renovation would entail, the kind of investment that would be, as well as now we know that we're in a situation where we're going to add on to an existing building, and we want to be really clear about where there might be opportunities for efficiencies or, you know, sharing of amenities, that sort of thing, and where things need to be kept really separate. So this is a big part of what, what SHS will be able to provide to us in this, in this project.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I do not see any other hands. So with that said, I will call the question. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that too is carried. We will move on to item 4C, which is the CIO Performance Evaluation Committee Minutes dated February 4. That has been moved by Counselor Desai and seconded by Counselor Patterson. Any discussions therein? Seeing none, I will call the question. Anyone opposed? And there is none, so that too is carried. Item 4D, the CIO Performance Evaluation Committee Closed Meeting Minutes, which are also dated February 4. That's been moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor Mackey. Any questions? We have to go into close the, the work, but there are none. And if that's the case, I will call the, call the question. Anyone opposed? And there is none, so that too is carried. Item 5 is closed meeting matters. There aren't any. Item 6 is reports. And we have the board report dated January 21st and the minutes dated December 18th. Dr. Era, I understand, is on the line. That, that did we have a mover for that? I believe we did. No, I have a mover for the bylaws, but I do not have a mover for, for this particular report. So I will call for a mover moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Robinson. And Dr. Era, you have the floor.
Good morning, Warden. Good morning, Counsel. Thank you for having me. The highlight from the board report was the vaccination plan for Gray and Bruce, and it is consistent with the provincial framework. The part of the, the plan is the mass utilization hubs and, and the task force to execute that rather large project. All these components are in place and progressing nicely. The, in, in general, the situation report in Gray Bruce, which is related to the board report as well, is we, we maintain full control over the pandemic locally, and we currently have, as, as we had at the time of the board, no outbreaks in long-term care, retirement homes, schools, or daycare. If, if there is interest in any specific questions, or if that the board or the council would like me to provide the situation update on, on the COVID and opioid, I'll be more than happy to, but that's in general the highlight from that board meeting, Mr. Warden.
So maybe we can pause there. Any questions for Dr. Era? Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to Dr. Era. I understand that as things open up next week, we are opening up in yellow zone. And I thought that when this last kind of shutdown took place that we were in green. So what is the rationale for being in yellow as opposed to green? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. When the lockdown went, took place, I believe we were in the yellow. Regardless, we all, we, the, we always look with the ministry at the previous two to three weeks, the week between two and three weeks in the past, where the data would decide what color we're in right now. And to the best of my ability to, to look at the data, if we, when we open next week, we will be qualified for either green or yellow, and that is based on the same indicators in the framework, mainly the epidemiology, the hospital capacity, all these measures. So, so this, this decision will, will happen quite close to the announcement itself. And, and I, I believe we would be back in the yellow if, if the prediction remains the same. And it's worth mentioning whether we're in the green or the yellow for businesses or for different sectors in the community, the, the measures would be the same in, in a way that we, we left them before the lockdown.
Thank you. But I believe it's worthwhile making clear, Dr. Era, that we don't know whether we're going to be green, yellow, or any other color until the ministers actually make that announcement.
Precisely.
Okay, any other questions? Counselor Patterson? Thank you, Warden. I can wait. I just have a, a little bit of an update, so I'll wait till the questions are finished. Okay, any other?
I do see Counselor Mackey and Counselor Potter.
Excellent. Counselor Mackey, please.
Thanks, Warden, and thanks very much, Doctor. I just wanted to congratulate you and your team on the vaccination rollout plan. It was nice to see it on CTV News last week, so again, congratulations. The other day, General Hillier mentioned that Phase 2, April, May, and June, they're expecting 7.6 million vaccines. Do you know what, if any idea what that would translate into Gray and Bruce counties?
Not the exact numbers, but it will be the second phase, which is essential workers, and that would, would entail vaccinating first responders, school, municipal staff, any, any person who would be considered essential in the context of the emergency. And, and I do believe we have the ability to vaccinate that group in, in way less than the three months that the province is projecting.
Excellent. Counselor Potter?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Era, for your report. And I know that you've been quite concerned about the opioid situation, and I just wondered if there's any new update, and would you agree that we may be dealing with this situation a lot longer than we will be with COVID at this stage?
Through you, Mr. Chair, definitely. I, it is definitely concerning, and I agree with the statement that it's, it's an issue that requires long-term commitment to, to ensure solutions are in place. And we had in January and so far in February, 24, 25 EMS calls, the emergency date is not out yet. And it's worth mentioning that in the, the data from 2020, with the complete confirmation from the coroner, will not be out until April and June. Last time I presented to the council, I made an error in that the, the numbers we have from the Ministry of Health were up to September 12 deaths in 2020, and we, we will provide an update when that complete number comes. At, at this point, we have two alerts that went out in the past in, in 2021 related to a cluster of overdose. Core programs are in place and remain in place. Needle Exchange Program, naloxone program, opioid working group, and coordinating. We have completed outreach in multiple housing facility, Victoria Village, food banks, and medical clinics, and some street outreach, and involvement in the Drug and Alcohol Strategy, leadership and the steering committee and sharing of the opioid working group. So that's the type of response we have, and we, we are looking forward when the opioid, when the COVID emergency ends to tailor all our efforts to that long-term commitment.
Thank you, Dr. Era. And I would just say that a number of people have raised this issue with me, and I have asked staff to bring something a little more fulsome back to council at a future date. So I know that that's in the hands Barb Fede. She and I had some brief conversation by email this morning. I know that there was a, a meeting yesterday of the opioid working group. I don't know if she wants to chime in now. Again, I'm famous for pressuring people, aren't I? On this spot, I feel that you need to chime in now because I do know that staff are planning to bring something more fulsome to council at a future date. Okay, and Counselor, I don't see any other hands, so that means I can now go to Counselor Patterson, correct?
I, I do see Counselor Mackey's hand up again.
Ah, I didn't. He's on my second screen, so I better flip over there once. Oh, sorry, Counselor Mackey.
No problem. Yes, Counselor Desai and I sat in on the, the meeting yesterday for the, the Drug and Alcohol Working Group, and some of the, the highlights from yesterday was they're looking at a simple possession exemption. They're, they're wanting to expand the Safe Supply Initiatives and are, are looking at, you know, how, how to do that. They're looking at mobile harm reduction initiatives. Currently, the individuals that are dying, it's happening to people that are taking the drugs alone. So there's no one there with naloxone to, to help them out if they run into trouble. So safe supply options. We did have the Peer Advisory Committee. There was three individuals that spoke to us yesterday, and really good insight into the, the issues around, you know, opioids and drugs. And I would certainly, you know, encourage County Council to invite them to attend and, and speak to us. It was really interesting to hear from people with lived experience. They are also looking at a drug treatment court, which would kind of stay charges. There would be a wraparound team that would advise or would involve mental health and, you know, housing and all the different resources. And then, you know, if the person's successful and graduates, they go back in front of the judge a year later, and those charges are stayed or, or resolved, I guess, dropped. Those were, were some of the highlights. So the, the, the group is certainly active, and, you know, they've got different subcommittees. And, you know, I'm really optimistic that they're moving in the right direction, so there'll be more to come. That's just a quick overview from what I picked up the other day, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. And I was happy to read an article passed on to me by Barb Fede this morning that showed OPP officers, and I have to send love to them because as a result of their use of naloxone, they'd say 200-plus lives, which I think is hugely significant. All right, I do not see any other hands, so I believe that now I can go to Counselor Patterson.
Mr. Warden, sorry, if I may, sorry, I can't trace.
Absolutely, sir, yeah.
I, just regarding the question about the number in, of people in Phase 2, it is on page number eight of our plan posted on our website, and I can go through the numbers quickly. The, the total would, sorry, essential workers are around 30,000 people, adults age 60 and above are about 50,000 people, and attrisk population, 26,000 people, and remaining eligible population, 11,000 people.
Thank you, sir. I did read that. Okay, Counselor Patterson, you're on now.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Good morning, everyone. During that meeting in December, we did hold elections, and I'm pleased to share that Andy, the mayor of King Cardon, is the new vice chair and the chair. I was elected chair, and I'm pleased to have that honor. And we also filled the vacant provincial appointee position, and that is filled by Helen Clare Tangling from West Grace. So we welcome her to the board. And just of note, we set our meeting dates for 2021, and they are the fourth Friday of every month. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Is there anything else here? I don't see any other hands.
Yes, Counselor Soever.
Go ahead, Counselor Soever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a question for Doc, Dr. Era regarding his last comments. It just reminded me that most of the elderly, we, we have the oldest part of Gray County here in the town of the Blue Mountains, and so we would, we would fall in that over 60. I think our average age is like 57. So there's a huge number of people over 60 in this end of the county, and I haven't seen any plans yet for a a mass vaccination clinic in this end of the county. So I, I just want to know if there are plans for such.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the three hubs, as, as you know, are in Hanover, King Cardon, and Own Sound. And this is one system. There is a second system that usually services all Gray Bruce, which is the, the traditional distribution to family health teams, to pharmacies, and other healthcare providers. We would anticipate that the, the hub would take pressure of the other system to provide that service. Regardless, part of the work with the task force for vaccine is to map out spaces that are available for bigger clinics or mass clinics in every community in Gray and Bruce, and providing those spaces that are volunteered by organizations that would provide them, providing these for pharmacists and family health teams that would like to scale up their operation. Yeah, so that, that would provide that that bigger mass clinics and, and wherever they're needed. We don't expect that there's going to be a flood of vaccine that would cover all Gray Bruce within two weeks, and we have to activate everything. The other alternative solution is to move parts of the hub to the communities that they need them, to, to have the smaller hub in different places. Regardless, I do believe that we, we would be prepared for any scenario that will take place at that time when more vaccines are available.
Thank you, sir. And I am flipping between both screens, and I do not see anyone else with their hand up, I believe. So I, oh, I see Counselor Robinson now that I flipped back to the screen. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, I would certainly like to extend congratulations to Counselor Patterson for becoming a chair of the Board of Health. Well done.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Okay, I think we are ready to call the question on this report. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is passed. Thank you very much. Now, Madam Clerk, I want to apologize to you. You gave me a perfectly good sheet to try to keep me organized, and I did a great job of messing it up on you. So my apologies to you. We are on item seven now. You must have been chuckling, that, that guy. What a doughhead, right? Item number seven, we have two bylaws. They're being moved by Counselor Woodbury and seconded by Counselor Patterson. Are there any questions on either of these bylaws?
I do see Counselor Desai's hand.
Counselor Desai, go right ahead. And Counselor, yeah, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would ask that the question be split into, and so that we can vote on the two bylaws separately.
Okay. Okay, so we will need a resolution or a motion on the floor to separate or to, to vote on the bylaws separately.
So moved by Counselor Desai. Is there anyone who is second, seconded by Counselor Robinson? That they be separated. And now, Madam Clerk, can I deal with 510721?
We need to vote on the separation.
Okay, so all those in favor of the split? Sorry, anyone opposed? Anyone opposed to the split? I'll get this thing right, yeah. So anyone opposed? No one opposed that I can see, so that is carried. We are now ready to deal with them separately, so I will deal with 510721. That's with respect to the code of conduct. And so do I need a separate mover, Madam Chair, or can I still use Counselors Woodbury and Patterson?
If Counselor Woodbury and Patterson are fine to move bylaw 5107, then you can certainly use them. I see Counselor.
Both of them, yes, nodding their heads. Okay, so we'll go with that, and the item is now on the floor. Are there any questions? I do not see any questions. That said, I will call the question. Anyone opposed to approval of this bylaw? And again, I see no one waving their hands and nodding their heads. So all of that is carried. Thank you very much. I probably need two new movers then, though, Madam Clerk, for 510821 with respect to the estimates. So moved by Deputy Warden McQueen and Counselor Carlton. Any questions on this item? Counselor Desai.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I've had a, I've had a bit of a hard time understanding why we've, we've moved the 1% from reserves. And so I tried to look back at some of the data, and one of the things we, we mentioned quite a bit in, at the Committee of the Whole was that we were doing this to be fiscally responsible and, and to be fiscally aware of the pressures that our constituents were facing during this significantly hard year. The data suggests that in 2020, our funding requirement had gone up 3.5% to, to approximately $2.01 million, at 3.5%. In 2021, the funding requirement was 1.4 million at 2.4% increase. And this is, of course, before we do the funding for the asset management and affordable housing, and it's also before we take into account the additional growth. And it's also before we take into account the additional growth. What has what has me particularly bothered is that we could avoid taking this one percent from the reserves. If we were to postpone the five hundred thousand dollar movement to the. Affordable Housing Fund and postpone that to a time where we can actually afford to do that from levy funded monies. I know I'm not going to change minds. It was very clear. It was a seventeen one vote on on Friday and I'm not going to change minds here today. And so I'm not going to take up much of your time, but I will leave you with 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 this thought. And it's, some of you may have heard a the the original quote, I've modified it a bit. We must use levy funding today so that our children may have reserve funds to fix aging infrastructure. Our children will need to fix aging infrastructure so that their children may have a great county and each of our individual municipalities. Worth growing up in. And which is why I don't think I can, I, well, I'm certain I cannot support. The bylaw today and which is why I wanted it to be split into two questions. I thank you very much, Mr. Warden, for the time.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. Are there any other people with questions or comments on this bylaw? Seeing none, I will then call the question. Anyone opposed to approval of this bylaw?
Opposed.
There being just one opposed, that is Carrie. Okay, so we will move on then to item number eight, good news and celebrations. Is there anyone with news that they want to share? I see Counselor Potter.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Just the this Saturday night, Craigleaf Heritage Depot presents the the next two in their real history film series. One of those is on the Craigleaf fossils, which does not include me. It's about the. It's about the four hundred and fifty million year old fossils along the Georgian Bay shoreline, along Craigleaf and between Craigleaf and Thornbury. It's one of the oldest, one of the few places on earth where you can find fossils this old, visible. And you can actually walk on that shoreline and see them. So there's a, there's one film about the fossils. The other is about the Niagara escarpment. So sorry about that. And it. Will be. Telling the story of the escarpment and and its natural history. Both of them are made by a company called Mountain Goat Films, which is located right here in the Blue Mountains. And they use a lot of very, very new and interesting techniques in their filmmaking. They did the two earlier films on the scenic caves and the Mary Ward, if you had a chance to see those. So those are being launched this week. You can go to the Craigleaf Heritage Depot website. At Theresa Blue Mountains Public Library and see the the schedule for it and sign up. It's it should be about an hour presentation, so it's very worthwhile and very interesting for people to learn a little more about Gray County history. And and the deep and rich history that we have here.
Thank you very much, Counselor Potter, and I would agree with you. I think the Niagara escarpment does have quite a story to tell. It's fascinating. Any other people? I only saw Counselor Desai. I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Rotorock Highlanders, it's a group of young people and and we're based in Markdale or Gray Highlands. But we're we're we've got members in other parts of the county as well. We will be making a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars to the Safe and Sound. Organization and Owen Sound. We're also, if you remember last year, we we did the fundraising for the hospice. And and ended up raising over twenty three thousand dollars over the course of nineteen days. We're also now looking at how we can do that again this year. And so if anyone has any ideas for for what we can do as a fundraiser, feel free to reach out. And if there's any young people watching this enthralling meeting, feel free to reach out if you'd like to join us. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden.
Very welcome. Anyone else? I do not see anyone else. Want to thank you for that. And we'll move next to item nine, adjournment, and that's been moved by Counselor Potter and seconded by Counselor Burley. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that too is carried. Thank you very much. We will take a second to.